Thirty?
Yep.
Great. So. Thanks, everyone for coming. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's five thirty P M. I just wanted to, so we have, you know, the agenda we've seen. This is not a typical meeting of the South Thomaston Planning Board. We're here to have a workshop on the topic of drilling and blasting. The context for this is that the town of South Thomaston currently has a moratorium in place on new and expanded mineral extraction quarrying, blasting operations, because we are in the process of developing a comprehensive ordinance to govern that type of activity. So in order to support that process, we with the planning board, we have some members here in the audience of the ordinance review committee that's charged with drafting the ordinance as well. See, John Snow way in the back trying to hide. And myself and Terry are also on that committee. We're here to hear a presentation from Peter Bennett and his colleagues at Maine Drilling and Blasting about generally some of the things that we might need to know in order to and some key topics that we just might not understand quite clearly enough about what is involved in the kind of blasting required to extract rock and mineral in this area. And we'll have an opportunity to ask them questions. They're here tonight at the town's request to provide general information. Maine Drilling and Blasting has done work on the one active quarry in South Thomaston. They're not here tonight on behalf of that quarrying operation. They're here to give a general presentation to help educate everyone and allow us to ask questions, take advantage of their specialized knowledge. So I would just ask, you know, if we keep our questions. I know there's a lot of people with a lot of questions in the audience, and I appreciate that. If we can try and keep them focused on learning as much as we can generally about anything, you know, anything that's on your mind. We don't have because they might not be contractually authorized to answer direct questions about work they're contracted to do. And I don't know what that's what that stands for, how that how that works. But that's, I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of of the specific context of this presentation. And we're excited to hear from Maine Drilling and Blasting. We're excited to hear all of your questions. I think we'll probably do questions from the board first after the presentation, and then we'll open it up to questions from the public. We'll make sure we leave plenty of time for that. So with that, I think, take it away. Oh, I think you said maybe forty, forty minutes, forty-five minutes.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's reasonable. So I'm gonna share this hopefully, hopefully this works here. Let's be good together.
You're there.
Perfect. Did one thing right today.
Your wife says otherwise, since she knows.
Yeah, so five. This is going forward for some reason, Tim. Yeah, so Dave Ben.
It's on slides, presentation versus slideshow.
My goodness, great.
You know, with the three dots, I believe, on the right.
You were just trying to zip the meeting right there. What to be done, and then go back.
Go to end show, maybe, and start. Yeah, go to end show.
Yep, on the.
Okay, good.
Now hit the third one over from the left, right there.
One more. Works. No.
Let me see if this will, this will get us back to where we're at.
Say that, hit the last one, right? So what you were saying?
Yes, that one. See slideshow right there.
Yep, perfect. So we're not appearing very still.
Thank you. The meeting is over.
Where did you get the second one from left?
Or just leave it in that mode.
I think we just, yeah, we'll leave it here.
Folks, right there.
Possible deposit on each screen. Yeah, that's gonna be a little bit problematic, but let me.
Try, try the second one from the left.
That's just, that's just slide that you turn.
That's slide view. Slide sorta.
I don't know why it's doing that.
Actually, should work from there. You're in, you're in presentation right now. Your spacebar.
Let's see, as soon as I hit it, it just goes.
That's, I think it's built into the slide transitions.
It should be, because this is an old, this is kind of an old thing we just, we.
That could be part of the issue that it's an old PowerPoint.
No.
Well, let's, let's just, let's just look at it whichever way we can look at it. Maybe just get out of the slideshow and go back to the main view and we can.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So we'll, my apologies, we'll have to work if we're about this, I guess, in the interest of time. So wanted to, wanted to thank Dave for reaching out last, I believe it was last week, right, correct Dave? And just kind of blend it together, but he'd asked us to put together a presentation on kind of general drill and blast knowledge, some of the, what we want to do is highlight some of the terminology. I think that kind of goes along with the industry that the general public usually is interested in being kind of aware of. So we're gonna, our goal here is to, is to do that tonight. So I'm gonna let the folks to my left and right introduce themselves, just so you know who, who you're talking to. So why, why do you go ahead?
My name is Tim Harmon. I work in our technical service department. I've been in, working for Maine Drilling and Blasting for twenty years now. I've only been in the business for twenty-two. I was kind of a latecomer to it. But I handle blast designs. I go out and, and help with seismograph setup. I do investigations, forensic analysis, when we do have an issue. And I basically travel in every single state that we work in. Maine Drilling and Blasting is now from Gardner, Maine, all the way to Miami, Florida. So I have a big area of cover. I myself am located from Connecticut.
And I'm Kevin Bowers. I'm a divisional superintendent for our quarry division in the state of Maine. I work directly under Pete. And I too have been here for about just over twenty years with Maine Drilling. Started a little bit earlier than than Tim did.
And my name is Pete Bennett, and I'm the division manager for our New England Quarry Division. It's one of our operating divisions in the company. We handle drilling and blasting for the quarry mining and aggregate side. Basically from Aristoc County, you know, from the Canadian border all the way down to Southern Connecticut is our territory. So basically a five-state area, not including Vermont. And we, you know, we handle between a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, forty different quarry sites annually. So we're, you know, we're busy, it's, it's shocking how busy we are at this time of year, honestly. But I think a little cold weather and snow will, will slow that right up. But what I wanted to do was just give a, give a little bit of a a company profile about, about Maine Drilling and Blasting. We're, we're in our fifty-nine year business. Next, twenty twenty-six will be sixty years. The company was started in Gardner, Maine in nineteen sixty-six. You know, with, with an air compressor and a jackhammer by, by the Ferrington family. Some, some of those family members still work for the company, which is, which is kind of neat. So as, as big as Tim says that we are, I feel like there's still a lot of, still a family business. I've been here, next year will be twenty-five years that I've been with the company. So this is all I've ever done really as a, as a professional. I worked for these guys in the summertime when I was in college. And then I was supposed to be a high school English teacher and decided I like to be outdoors more and, and, you know, kind of a faster pace of work. So decided to come on board with them full-time back in two thousand and one. As Tim alluded to, we're diversified through the East Coast and the Mid-Atlantic region. And we're, and we're slowly kind of pushing further south and west at the moment. We've, we've got offices outside of Atlanta, Georgia, and we're in the Nashville, Tennessee market right now as well. There's fourteen operating divisions. New England Quarry is one of those fourteen in the company. Local offices, team and autonomy. So really, I, I think the key to the success is to have local people, you know, that kind of live in, live in the area, are able to, you know, interact with the customers, with, with the local population, local regulatory, and, and do the job at a local level. So although I'm based in Southern New Hampshire, I, I grew up outside of Bangor, Maine, and, and was there until two thousand and one. They, they conned me into moving to New Hampshire, which actually wasn't, well, is not bad at all. New Hampshire's a pretty good state, but. So we are, we are the most experienced drilling and blasting company in the Northeast. I, I believe we're the second largest D and B company in North America currently. So, you know, back in two thousand and one, when I started, we were just under a hundred employees, and now we're, we're seven hundred plus right now. So we, we do a lot of work, a lot of different scopes of work from, you know, basic house foundations to driveways all the way up to the, you know, the larger aggregate side of the business. And then the last bullet I want to hit on is we are vetted by an internal engineering and tech services group. That's, that's Tim's role. We used to, we used to outsource engineering, and it just, it became a pain. So we, we kind of made our own group within the company. A lot easier to manage. We get a lot of good young people that come out of school that, that like, that enjoy that role and come to work for us in kind of a civil engineering capacity. And then they partnered with our technical services group to build jobs and basically design jobs so that we stay within the realm of, of local regulation, you know, to successfully complete the project. So that's just a little bit of a, of a profile of kind of who we are. You know, we've been around a while. We, we do a lot of business, you know, but we, we started really in New England and we're proud to be, you know, in this area, still in this market and, and operating at a high level. So Tim, I'm gonna turn it over to you for
Absolutely.
For, uh, to get the presentation going here. So.
So I don't feel ready to read it up there.
Yeah, you can just advance it if you want to here. So.
So while we blast, there are negative side effects. Blasting is energy. And so those side effects from that energy are vibration that goes out the torchy mic to your house. And air overpressure, which I believe, I was told the closest house is twenty-two hundred feet from the Wilson Court. A lot of what you probably feel is actually the air overpressure. So when you blast, the air actually moves. And does picture of a, a construction blast, they're covered with blasting mats. So ground vibration, when an explosion is detonated in the rock, it's released, and there's elastic movement to the ground. So the particles in the ground, they move, but they move right back to the same spot they're in. The exception to that is immediately where the blast is. That's obviously displaced. But the ground itself, outside of that area, does not. It's elastic displacement. And it's only allowed to move point zero zero four or point zero zero eight thousandths of an inch. A sheet of copper paper is point zero zero four. So you're only allowed to move the particles in the ground, two sheets of copper papers. That's it. All. And as the seismic waves travel outward from its source, those ground particles respond, and they do move. We're allowed, the, the vibration limit in the state of Maine is based on velocity. So it's two inches per second, velocity at forty hertz. That's all. We have to stay below that. And again, we can't move the ground particles more than eight one thousandths of an inch.
Sorry, everyone, I interrupted. Is that a state of Maine regulation as well? The, the vibration of the movement of the ground particle?
Yeah, that's, that's. Yes, two inches per second at forty hertz. And there's what's called a Z curve. Look at the picture of that company.
Yeah, I'll, I'll leave, I'll leave the rest of the questions for later. Thanks.
I think the only, the only outlier in the state of Maine, Tim, is on the air overpressure, which there's actually a, a more stringent regulation in the state of Maine at a hundred and twenty-nine decibels, whereas.
That's only in quarry.
In, in quarry, right.
And that's because years ago, when they did the research, they used different types of seismographs. And the Department of Homeland Protection was using a seismograph that registered at high frequencies. So they set the limit based on those high frequencies, which is one twenty-nine. On the construction side, it's set at one thirty-three. But because of the difference, they're actually equal. It's the same reading. It's just one is high frequencies, one is not. It's the exact same decibels though. It's a little bit confusing. And the machines that recorded for that one twenty-nine aren't even manufactured anymore. So it's kind of an archaic rule that the D E P has in place. One thirty-three knows, I'm shocked. Do you want to add something?
No, I just, I think, I think sometimes, you know, particle velocity and frequency, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty technical. It's confusing. We've got some slides built out that'll help.
Yeah, I would love to get to that. Yeah, so let's, let's carry on. Sorry to, sorry to throw a mention.
No worries.
So vibration, human body is very perceptive to it. And we can actually feel vibrations as low as one one hundredth of a safe level. When vibrations generated from new blasting operation, usually the homeowner will feel it, and they become focused on inspecting their house. We live in New England. And we have something up here called free saw cycle set. Do a tremendous amount of damage to our house. But we don't walk around our basement looking for cracks until they're blasting that store. And then we go and start inspecting our house, and we see all these cracks that were usually pre-existing. The inspections also identify surrounding activity operations or process work that may need coordination with. So we offer pre-blast surveys. We'll go out, we'll inspect your house, we'll take pictures of everything, they film it all. Any of you that live near the Wilson Court probably had something like that done.
With, yeah, within a half mile is state of Maine regulation through D E P, which, which is actually, you know, Commonwealth of Massachusetts is two hundred and fifty feet. So they extended quite a, quite a ways beyond even, even Massachusetts.
Which is, in a construction, they would stay closer to that two hundred and fifty feet. Building quarry situations, so the houses are further away, so they expand it out. So when an explosion is detonating, the rock, the energy is released. And isn't that a machine?
Okay, slide.
You can press it up.
I'm going around what? See, this is terrible. This is a video. So here's a little video for you, blast right next to a house. Very controlled. Don't go the wrong way. Go down, no.
Down. You're gonna have to buy your company max.
So air overpressure, the shock wave that results from the explosion, like I said, air actually moves. So as the blast goes off, that air is moving, and that's, that's when your dishes rattle or your windows rattle. It's actually the air that's causing that. And it can, it can be disturbed, you know, could we feel that? Our bodies feel that. So it's.
So Tim, just to jump back real quick and not to get us off track, but what, what is the reason? You know, we, we saw the video here. What's the reason for the blasting mats and that still work?
So when we're blasting close to something, we're gonna try to protect your house, you know. We're gonna put blasting mats on top to control all those variables that we can't realize. So those are just gonna hold it down so that nothing flies out. Last thing we want to do is cause damage somewhere. So blasting mats, some southern states, they actually use dirt to cover it up, just to keep it under control.
Yeah, and obviously that, that video that was up, that was, that was from a housing development with, with brand new construction. We don't have to go back. We don't have to play the video, but you know, this is, you've got brand new underground utilities, brand new construction, you know, forty feet or less from that blast area. I think it's important to, to, you know, key in on blast area. So the, it's the amount of, you know, basically real estate that you have to allow the rock to move. Now, in this, in this instance, we're right on top of a, you know, a newly built home. So that would necessitate the use of blast mats. You know, and I, and without getting into the, into the, too into the details of Wilson, but that's, that's actually how we started this project. We, you know, we were shooting underneath some power lines to, to develop a face. Because typically in the quarry side, you're, you're not trying to, you know, confine that rock to one place. You're actually trying to get it to move. So it's easier to excavate and then process in a, you know, a, a rock pressure. So a little bit different scope, but same, the same, I think what people don't realize is the same principles apply in quarry construction in a lot of instances, so.
Yeah, I think we have a slide on blast design inside.
We do, yeah. Because you, you see this.
I would have been with Mark. So air overpressure or the, the noise from the blast can be described as thunder. You know, that's kind of what it sounds like. It sounds like thunder. You think about it, when you hear thunder, makes you jump that you're not expecting it. And that's what's gonna happen with blasting as well. And without question, the biggest challenge for a blaster is maintain the balance in the amount of confinement to the energy as well as leasing the energy in a controlled path of least resistance. That's the hardest thing for us to do is everything, whether it's water, gas, explosive, they want to take the path of least resistance. So we have to design our blast to control that. One of the first things that we do when we get out to a job, any job where there's construction, mining, is we're gonna do a pre-blast assessment. We're gonna create a job hazard analysis. We're gonna look at, look at what are the hazards around us, how close are the nearest analysis? Because we have to control the vibration, and we have to control the air overpressure. So we're gonna do this analysis, identifying what these hazards are, and create a detailed job hazard analysis. And that's gonna be our footprint for moving forward. You want to add to that at all, Pete?
No, I, I think that's common in construction and quarry. So that's, that's just a, that's a standard.
So the next thing that we're gonna do, turned it up there, oh, it's on there. Is we're gonna go and we're gonna do a pre-blast design. So we're gonna take how far away the closest structure is. And we're gonna plug it into this design app right here and figure out how much pounds of explosive we can safely shoot so that we don't cause damage. There's a misconception out there that the bigger the blast, the worse it is. And it's really how many pounds of explosives shoot at one time. And that's what we use this to do. We use this to control how many pounds of explosives are shooting at one time. That controls the vibration, that controls the air overpressure.
So what, what, what affects that mostly? Biggest effect is what pounds per delay or pound shooter you get at the same time.
How many, how much explosives you're loading into borehole, basically. So let's say we've got a fifty-foot hole, and we can only shoot twenty-five feet at a time. We'll put a deck in there, some inert material, stone deck, and shoot those separately. And with the advent of electronic detonators, we can shoot within one millisecond and have those delays firing separately. In fact, with electronic detonators, we have safely shot as close as nine feet to a house without damaging them. But it's all about control. It's all about how many pounds you shoot at a time. In a situation like that, where we're shooting nine feet off, we will literally shoot point two seven pounds of explosives at one time. And we'll design our blast to accommodate that. In a case of a quarry, we might shoot a couple hundred pounds at one time, depending on what we're allowed as we move closer to those homes. And that's what we use this for. And the bottom part down there, you can't really see it, I apologize for that. But that's where the vibration predictions are. We can do up to five different distances. So we can take the five closest homes, plug them into this, and see what that vibration limit is gonna be at that. And then we would design our blast around that. There's a lot of design and pre-blast stuff, excuse me, that go on before we ever blast. Timing is another thing. We'll, we'll design out our timing so that we can control how much explosive shoot at one time. Because again, that's the key. How many pounds of explosives shoot at one time? Now, how many holes you're shooting, now how deep they are, but how many pounds of explosives shoot at one time? Did I do that?
No, I, I just, I just think it's important that, you know, the, the audience realizes it's, you know, it's kind of hole size, the, the depth of that hole, and then also how you, how you segregate the timing between the holes, how that shot sequences. It all affects how many pounds shoot at once.
So here's a, a typical borehole. This, this one, you would have, you have the stemming at the top. We'll always put in stemming. And the purpose of that stemming is, should be angular, clean angular zone. And the purpose of it is to lock in like a puzzle. So it's holding that energy in so that the energy has time to do its job and goes horizontally rather than vertically. When stuff goes vertically, that's when we get in trouble. We want to control that energy and hold it down so it just pushes the rock out. Typically, we'll drill a, a certain percentage below grade because explosives don't just shoot off of the ground. They actually shoot at a forty-five degree angle. So you have to have each of your holes overlapping so that you can get your grades. That's the purpose of the sub-drill that you see at the bottom there, is so that you get to your grade that you're shooting at. We usually will use a cast booster. So there's a detonator that goes down and goes into the cast booster. Again, the detonators are timed. That's how we control how much explosives shoot at one time. It sets off the cast booster, and then the cast booster sets off a blasting agent. The blasting agent could be ammonium nitrate fuel oil. That goes back a few years. It's not used as much. To an emulsion base, which is much more common. You see those bulk trucks driving around the road. That's what they're on inside. It's an emulsion-based blasting agent. Sets off the explosion, and then it shoots up. In the case of bulk promotion, that's usually shooting, shooting somewhere between seventeen and nineteen thousand feet per second. So it shoots pretty fast. Okay, so ampoule, shoots at maybe sixteen thousand feet per second. It's a little bit slow.
Cast boosters significantly faster too.
Yeah, it's probably around twenty-seven thousand feet per second. So it's pretty fast. And all an explosion is, is a controlled fire. It's just a fire that burns really fast. Here's an example of where we would have your bulk or ampoule at the bottom of the hole, and then we've got a spot where there's some light burden on the face. Burden is the amount of material between the borehole and the actually free face. And when you don't have enough there, you have to use a lighter charge diameter. Also, in this case, you can see they have on the blue represents packaged product. Where they're using a smaller charge diameter because there's less burden at that one spot. Safety is always our number one priority. And if you were to load too heavy where that lighter burden is, where that little triangle is up there, you could have something shoot out and shoot straight out, and that's when you, you get yourself into some trouble. And then, then they have the stemming on top. And again, the purpose of the stemming is to control that energy, to hold it down long enough for the rock to push out horizontal. So fracturing and displacing of the rock takes place immediately in the area around the borehole. And then any unused energy again travels away from the blast's vibration. Like in this picture, so you can see you got the borehole, it goes off, and then that unused energy travels out. This is a video? You know, I'm not, so it's just an example of that energy. You can see the waves as they travel out. Kind of think of drop, dropping a pebble in the water, and you get the waves as they move out. That's what blasting vibrations have. And as it goes out, those waves dissipate. And in the case of blasting, every doubling of the distance, vibration decays by one-third. So if we're a thousand feet away to two thousand feet away, that house, two thousand feet away, got one-third less vibration than the house a thousand feet away. It never increases, it always decays. You think I get this at some point, right? X X power vibration can be controlled by understanding the geology. Different geologies can respond to that vibration differently. A, a softer geology, the waves might travel a little bit further. A harder geology, we'll control them a little bit better. And the way we do that is again through appropriate design and charge weight. It's all about how many explosives shoot at one time. Now, how many holes, how much explosives shoot at one time? And we control that through timing and the type of detonator setting. And we control that through timing and the type of detonator set we use. You have this in here twice?
I think we can skip. I need a volunteer over here to help.
Well, because I hit it and it goes one way, and then I hit it and it goes another. So here's an example, you did have it twice, see? Throw me a beer after those. So here's an example of our pattern. So, initial, Asian point is up in the corner. So you would connect these holes together so that they shoot. And, and around here typically they're shooting electronically. So that initial pay, Asian point will go off at zero. Next hole would probably go off at maybe eighteen ping.
Yeah.
Eighteen milliseconds. And then the next one at thirty six and so forth down the line. And then you have progressive timings. Now you come to the second row. And let's say maybe that starts at fifty milliseconds. And then the second hole would go off at sixty eight milliseconds and then so forth. And you continue that progressive timing throughout. So that everything is shooting separately. And again, that's how we control vibration. Is by limiting how much explosives are shooting at one time.
I would like just to ask one question. So when we feel something. We're feeling the succession of blasts, so we're feeling one blast versus each individual blast.
You're feeling the waves.
The waves, yeah.
Yes. So, so it's going to shoot, each hole is shooting independently. So each hole is creating a wave and those waves are moving out through the blast.
But because it's milliseconds, when you feel it, it feels like one, just one blast.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, because it literally, most blasts hang within five hundred milliseconds, less than half a second. It's very rare to have a blast that is far over a second. You, I don't think you ever seen one, right? They've never been on, pretty rare. Basically on some of those really big shots.
Different applications too. I think, you know, you go out west in big iron ore, you know, blasting where they're shooting eighteen inch holes and. A million pounds in a shot, those, those shots can last ten.
Those shots can let, yes.
We're doing a different scenario. Um, and, and then just, Tim, I think it's important, speak to the, uh, the. Electronic detonators versus the nano and kind of how we control pounds per delay that way.
What would be the distance in between each of those blasts that's going to vary with the design?
So.
Because I mean, you know, each one creates a wave or succession of waves and. You know, waves amplify one another. So, you know, you study that, I mean. You, you say, oh, you have small detonations, but in the end it creates a gigantic. Wave by the succession.
So when we're predicting a vibration, that's what it's predicting, it's predicting what that highest vibration is going to be at your house.
It's cumulative.
The holes. Separated is how we control. The breakage, um. The control of the blast. There's just different geometries involved. And again, our, our goal. Is to control that path of least resistance.
So in a quarry.
Pattern is used to control that path of least.
So we're interested in quarrying operations, not somebody blasting a rock by their house. So a typical blasting operation without that pattern.
Well, it's, it's, so it's, it's dependent on, on the operation, um. So typically, it's all based on powder factor, which is basically, you know, the amount of. Explosive that you would use to break a, a, a massive rock. So. The bigger your pattern are, is the less explosive, right? Which everybody would think that's, that's great, right? Less explosives. The issue with that is. Now you, now those, that explosive energy is overconfined because you're trying to push too much mass rock. With not enough explosive and it actually results, typically can result in more vibration back towards structure. So. Powder factor is important, uh, depth of cut is very important, um, you know, on a shallower cut. Uh, you know, that pattern is going to be very, very tight. You know, this, this could be anywhere from, you know, seven feet. Difference to, um, you know, if we've got a sixty foot face, those patterns could be out fourteen to fifteen feet. It's all dependent on, on really the geology and the, and the depth of cut.
Now, powder factors, the ratio of pounds for explosives.
What's the driving factor? Is it like the amount of rock you're trying to extract? Or, you know, how does that work? Where do you store?
Yeah, so it's, I mean, basically it's, it's. So we're starting from, from square zero, we've got a, like I was.
Go back to the blast design.
Uh. I mean, we could. I just, I'm not sure it's, it's very.
I, I don't see this relevant. I think, you know, I'm trying to understand, you know, the number of explosions that are going to happen.
Sure.
You know, versus, you know, disruption, how much volume of material, so.
Correct.
You know, a quarry is a business. And hopefully, I mean, they want to grow, and so they, they need more and more material.
Right.
So, how did that evolve? I mean, do you, do bigger blasts?
It's so, so really it's, it's market demand and I'll, and I'll give an example. You know, I, we, we work in a quarry that's right on the North Shore of Boston that, you know, the. Logan Airport Play Path goes right over the quarry. Uh, this quarry shoots a million and a half tons of rock every year. So they're shooting two, you know, large shots per week, could be forty thousand tons per shot. So you think about forty thousand metric tons of material being moved. So that's, but they're based in that. You know, that urban market where they're trucking, I mean, they're doing a ton of work at Logan, they're doing this and that. Um, you know, when we get on the smaller scale, typically in the more rural areas, it's, you know. What is the market demand for, you know, what is that customer selling? How much rock do they need to crush? And we're not going to go in there, if they need to shoot thirty thousand yards and it's. There, there's a ten foot high wall, we can't shoot that all in one shot, it's unsafe. It's unsafe and it would back up and, and it would be an issue. So you, it's all dependent on what the customer needs and what the actual conditions are in that quarter.
How many quarries do you manage?
Uh, uh, close to a hundred and thirty.
A hundred and thirty.
Yeah.
And so they vary in size.
Very, correct, yeah.
And so there is a relationship, I would assume, with the side, between the size of the quarry. And the distance to residential areas.
Yeah. So that's, so I'll go back to that example, that, that quarry I just mentioned, uh, just outside of Boston. It, it's, if you look at an aerial of that quarry, it's, the whole rim is surrounded by neighborhoods. So our, we've got houses six hundred feet from the quarry, the actual quarry high wall.
And they, and they live with two blasts? A week or?
They, they do, yeah. And because we, we designed to, we use our blast design spreadsheet and are able to manipulate the timing. To make sure that we don't have an exceedance of, we, we, we're actually held to. A seventy five percent reduction of, of the USPM standard in that town. And that, typically, that actually tends to be more blasting because you can't, you're, you can't go outside a certain duration, so. You know, people think that if, if we cut the vibration spec down. That actually could result in more, more blasting because you need to move that amount of material. And, and stay within, within a certain regulatory limit.
It comes, it comes to that age-old question, what's the first chicken or the egg? Well, in, in most cases, these quarries have been there for a hundred years. And the towns were built around them, because what did they do? They produced jobs.
That's, that's the case there.
Rocks around them, like in this case that he's talking about. And it goes up and it becomes a city around the quarry that's literally in the middle of the city.
This, this quarry, you know, from the quarry rim, you know, there's a busy street. And from that street level to the lowest level in the quarries, about a two hundred and seventy foot elevation change. You're actually below sea level at the low, at the quarry floor there. You're close to Marblehead, so it's, you know, you're close to the ocean. Uh, so, yeah. But that, again, that's, that's a, that's a different scope than what we're talking about here. That's a, that's a mass producer that. You know, requires. A significant amount of, of ton shot per year for their crushing operation.
Oh, good. Yeah, so far.
I didn't want to.
We'll have, and we'll have a, you know, we'll have some more questions.
More questions at the end, too. I didn't mean to distract you, but I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. So. The way that we, besides planning, because there's a ton, like I said, a ton of planning that goes into this. We set up seismographs to record the vibration. Um, by state law, we have to set up at the closest uncontrolled structure. So we can't just set up at the quarry office and say, okay, that's, we're good. We have to go to the closest unowned structure. And set up a seismograph there. Now, whether we set up more than that or not, that depends on the town and what regulations they put forward. But by regulation, we have to set up at the closest uncontrolled structure.
I think, I think that's a goal coming out of tonight is. Um, because some, some folks don't want people coming onto their property and, and we fully respect that, but I. I think it, it would be beneficial for everybody to, to get a good cross-section of data. You know, around the quarry. And that doesn't mean that we can set up twenty seismographs, we're just, we're not equipped to do that. Per, per crew, right? But, you know, if we could get three to four around the quarry rim. Um, what I would like to do is, you know, I guess. Solicit tho, those neighbors that want that information, because we, we want that data. Um. You know, to be able to analyze it. And, and a lot of it is, we're not going to get a trigger, that, that, that instrument won't trigger, um, on a vibration level, potentially on, on the air over pressure, but.
And, and just so you. Because some people right away say, well, why isn't it triggering? Again, remember that further you get away, the vibration is decaying. So we can set the trigger level lower on the vibration, but the ground is actually moving right now. It's moving under our feet. But we grew up in it, we were born to it, so we don't feel it. The ground typically moves anywhere from point zero one to point zero two inches. Of elastic displacement at all times. When a truck or something drives over, that can jump up almost to a one, point zero eight, point zero nine. We typically set our seismographs at point zero five. Because if we set it too low. Then it gets all this randomness error, all these false triggers, and it fills up its memory, you don't get anything. We can sometimes lower that down, so like if we're out of the residence and we got to set at point zero five and went out getting them triggered. We can go to a point zero four and try that. We can maybe get it to a point zero three, depending on. What that ambient ground movement around it is, but you can never set it lower than a point zero. Because we'll get the actual movement of the ground.
Is that measuring peak particle velocity in?
That's peak particle velocity of the elastic displacement of the particles.
And then the Bureau of Mines sets the limit for danger at two, isn't?
Yes, two. So. We, I guess we can talk about this a little bit right now.
There's, there's.
Oh, you'll, you'll get to it, actually.
You'll see if you require.
Okay. Let's see if I can get to that z-curve. So this looks like a BP sign? So the condition and type of rock affect what actually arrives at the structures. We talked about that a little bit already. Um, and it's in the form of vibration. So the two primary components of vibration, particle velocity, how fast. That elastic displacement takes place. And. Because of the nature of all this, that's the one that we can mathematically calculate, and that's why the limits are set at that. Because you mathematically, easily with a calculator, output that. Um, it's also measuring frequency, that's. How many times those waves occur within one second? And again, the limit is two inches of velocity at forty hertz. So forty of those waves within a second. At two inches per second.
Yeah, what's a good example of very low fre, like a low frequency event? That we might not deal with necessarily here.
Let's wait till we get to the z-curve. So we can talk about, which will be next slide, we, we, by the end of the slide. So this is what's called the z-curve, and this is. All states use this for their regulatory, um, compliance. Some states use a OSPM, slightly different, it's a little more forgiving. Uh, this is the USPM, Maine recognizes USPM. Um. And back, starting in the sixties, seventies, well into the eighties. The US Bureau of Mines did tons of testing on all this. They went out, they bought some houses next to mines, they built some houses on shaker panels. And they went out and kept blasting next to them repeatedly, see what was caused damage. And what they found was that the weakest housing material, which is horsehair plaster. Which probably got some up here. Breaks at four inches per second. So somebody from the US Bureau of Mine said, all right. If four inches per second is when we start to see cracks in the plaster, we're going to set the limit at two, half of it. And that's where the two inches per second limit came. And it was almost thirty years of research, there's several books written by Dr. Siskin, Dr. Oryard. About ground vibration and how it affects homes. And the limits are all based off of that. So this z-curve measures not only. Velocity, so velocity is that bottom line, so if we go all the way over to the right and we go up. And I know you guys can't see it, but it says two inches per second at that top line on the far right. And if we were to fall it over, the line on the left is frequency, we would see that that is at forty hertz. That line that goes on the diagonal is your displacement line. And that is set at point zero zero eight inches or eight one thousandths of an inch. And again. These sheets of copy paper, it's all that is. So all you're allowed to move those particles. Two sheets of copy paper at two inches per second. The line then comes over and comes down, because what they found when they did this research. Is that houses like high frequency, but they do not play over. So those lines over, you'll see the limit is much less, and you get all the way over to a, uh, the one over on the frequency line, the zero. That, I can't read it from here, but it looks like the frequency is at about two. Because your house is much more susceptible to damage at those little frequencies. Pete was saying about the West Coast, Florida is a great example of this. Florida, you're doing basically marine blasting. You're, you're blasting coral limestone. And you're creating lakes. That's how they blast. Then they have these huge clam shells that come and dig it out. But because it's coral limestone, there's huge voids and seams and water all throughout it, they have to case every single hole. Well, that generates extremely low frequencies. So in Florida. It's very typical for all of your blasts to be on that left-hand side where those low frequencies are. And it's, it's, it's very challenging, you have to really be careful since you don't go over that line. With those low frequencies. It's not uncommon to have blasts go, go off at six, seven, eight. Frequency, which is extremely low. Whereas here, our frequencies are usually in the thirty, forty, sometimes even over a hundred. Because the bedrock up here, the granite, resonates at a much higher frequency.
I was speaking more towards like, like a low frequency event that everybody. Would, would know about would be like an earthquake, right? So very, very low frequency resulting. You know, kind of resulting in that, what would be damage, right? Um. So just, just to give a little.
And I think we have a slide that talks about that too. Go ahead, Ken.
Oh, that was a tip.
So are we, we good with that? So if you notice the, uh, the line too, in the center, it says you're, you're limited to point seven five inches on that. And that's at about eight for frequency. And that's for drywall, because drywall can break much easier. So when you get to those lower frequencies, that horsehair plaster is much more susceptible to all the damage. So on that center part, you're limited to only point seven five inches. I know we're supposed to wait for questions, but this can be confusing. Does anybody have a question on this?
I think I have, maybe just understanding the. The displacement line.
So the displacement line is that diagonal that, I wish I had a.
I guess I don't understand why it's diagonal.
Because as the frequency decreases. You notice it comes out, it gets lower.
So I can see that that's a, that, that looks like it would be decreasing velocity.
Right, as your velocity decreases, that line comes out and lowers in frequency as well.
Right, so I'm seeing that, but then the, the amount of displacement, I don't quite understand how that's related to the curve. Like the actual distance of displacement.
So. Need Dr. Kathy here for this one. But, let's, let's take New York City for an example. What, they did a ton of research, reason of the skyscrapers in New York City. And if you follow that displacement line straight up, it actually comes up to five inches per second. On that diagonal, what they found was the size skyscrapers in New York. Can actually withstand five inches per second. As long as the frequencies are high. So that line is coming down because it's lowering the frequency. And it's lowering the vibration level at the same time.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. Um, maybe we'll, we'll save it. I'll find out the answer some other way. I appreciate it. I don't want, I just don't want to sidetrack us. This is very helpful so far. Carry on.
But I think it's, it's important to state though, so, so you can, you can look at some seismograph data. And, and everyone, you know, goes to the two inches per second, that, that's my limit. So I didn't hit a two, so I'm good. I think, you know, at a base level, you can have a, you can shoot and have a one inch per second reading. On your, on your free, on your, uh, velocity, but if that, if you've got super low frequencies, that actually draws that z-curve down, so you, you're limited. Really by frequency. Free, everyone thinks. Vibration and vol, and particle velocity, but really frequency is, is the big, big factor here. So the less, the less frequency through that, through that material, the less vibration.
So in the, in the other words, the, the gray shaded area underneath. So in the, in the other words, the gray shaded area underneath the curve is, is acceptable.
You have to stay below that line.
Yeah, all the way across, that's clear, thank you. We have one question from them.
So could it shake the structure but not uh, crack the drywall? Is that the concern?
Yes, yes. Yeah, you will feel the vibration. Because, and, and that goes to this next slide, if you look. So what's tolerable in the human body? If we're looking at, we have that line, that red line. So above that red line is, is unsafe. Thanks, Pete, for that here. So above this red line right here. That's, that's out of compliance, so above the limit. Below that red line. This right here is toler- intolerable, but even though it's, it's within this limit right here. Our bodies don't respond well to high frequency. So to us, that's intolerable, we don't like it. And as the frequencies come down, we find it unpleasant. And then down here, below, you see a little bit of that over here in the low frequencies, we won't even notice. But most of it is below that line that we won't notice. So this, this we would find unpleasant, this we would find uncolorable. But it, it actually falls in right here, and part of that falls in right here. So we're going to feel that, and our human body is not going to like it. It's not damaging our house, but our human body does not like it.
So, is there a correlation then? Or what is the correlation then between the size of the blast, the amount of poundage? The peak philosophy and then the frequency? So in other words, if we're feeling the frequency, we're not necessarily feeling the peak velocity.
So we, we can't predict frequency, we don't have the ability to do that, but we can predict the velocity. So the way that you do that is you take the distance to the house. And then you use a formula called a scale distance. And you take the square root, it's the distance divided by the square root of the pounds of explosive issued at one time. And that creates a scale distance, it's just a ratio of distance to pounds of explosives. That is used to predict vibration, that scale distance number.
So I guess the, the. Question I have is, you're, just, I, I apologize if I'm using. The blasting you did as an example, but your blast in February was sixteen thousand plus pounds. The peak velocity was point oh three. The blast in April was thirty-two hundred pounds. And the peak velocity was point one nine, but we felt that more.
What we need to know though is how deep were the holes, how many pounds of explosives were shooting at one time? Because you're looking at it as a pool, and it's not a pool. It's, it's a park, and we have to see exactly one shot at one time. Seismograph setup and also.
And I don't want to speak out of school, I'm just trying to think of the different scope too, so. Potentially expanded pattern, shooting for more like riprap material, um, I know, I know. Again, I don't want to speak for Mr. Wilson here, but he, he, he's contracted to some, some uh, you know, seawall work. Um, so we have, we have done some shots to generate oversized material intentionally. And that, that could, I don't have the data in front of me, I apologize, but that, that, that's kind of brings me, you know, comes to mind a little bit.
I think what people need to hear and I'll speak for the community is the understanding, the amount of explosive. The peak velocity, and then what we're actually feeling when we're a half or three quarters of a mile away. And we're trying to understand that correlation.
So, so when you're a half to three quarters of a mile away. You're feeling the air more than you are the vibration. It might seem to you that it's vibration that you're feeling. But it's really the air, because the air travels further than the vibration. And again, the air actually moves, and that's, we feel that.
And then it is the movement of the structure what could cause a concrete floor to crack or tapes on the sheet rock to split? So what?
There, at that distance, there should be no, certainly no movement of the structure.
Very good.
Because again. Remember, we're only allowed to move those particles, one eighth of a thousandth of an inch. It's, it's really nothing.
At what distance, sorry, because doesn't, doesn't, if you have a wave, right, the wave is.
So that's what the z curve is, so that's, that's your displacement curve. So when we get up to two inches per second. At forty hertz, that's our limit. And that vibration has to be under that line right there. And that's the point zero zero eight line. For displacement.
Got it.
And I think, um, so that. Excuse me, you, uh, that first seismograph you made you read off. On, was it a point zero?
Point zero three three.
Okay, so, so that's an example right there, so. We have a, we have a reading for vibration there, but that didn't, that wasn't triggered by vibration, because as Tim was speaking about earlier. Um, we set it at a point zero five typically for trying, trying to gain some data. Is to, below that, you know, erroneous, you know, a truck driving by could, could trigger that. That most likely was triggered by air over pressure, which is why the seismograph triggered, so when it captures that signal of the air over pressure. In decibels, then it, it records, you know, what the actual PPV was at that point, but it, it wouldn't have triggered at point zero three.
So that goes to your point that if you have multiple seismographs around the rim, you can get a better data.
Correct, absolutely, correct. And that's, and that's what we want to do, we, I mean, we're, we're in the business of. We've got to collect data and, and try to refine things the best we can, right? You know, we, we've got to, we're contracted to do a job, but we also. We're very mindful of, of the general public and you have to be responsive to that, so. I think it's, you know, it's, it would be worthwhile for us to be able to get a number of units in the surrounding areas. And I think to Tim's point, we're going to capture some, some air over pressure, or maybe there's something. You know, there's some design variables that we could, that we could alter to help with that, you know, and it could be simply changing the direction of. Of the, of the relief, right, changing the, the shot direction, um, but that's, that's something that we would definitely like to take a look at and analyze.
We can do things like when we have an open quarry face, we can deck the opening holes. So when that first blast goes off, it mutes that a little bit by cutting that charge in half. And it can knock the decibels down quite a bit for air over pressure. So there's different ways that we can mitigate that.
Two, two questions, but go ahead, please.
Okay, um, and could you just state your name, please?
Yeah, my name's Wes Prowl, I live in Maplewood, in South Charleston. I, I, I just have a question, I'm trying to understand the frequency and the particle movement. And I'm looking at our, our, our map over there in the town. And I hear that the frequency in granite is grand, uh, as a. Sort of the higher frequency?
Typically resonates higher.
Resonates, and then water is a lower frequency. So my, my, my question is, I'd just like. Maybe some explanation of the, the. The blast originates in granite, and then it travels towards the houses that were. People are concerned in, and, and through glacial till. Uh, we're all on, most of us, many of us are on clay, which is ancient sea bottom. And then it reaches water, so some of the houses are. So, so this is what's between the blast and some of the houses, and my question is. How does the various materials affect? The, the free propagation of the frequency in these waves that are coming from the blast?
And I'm going to be honest with you, I don't have an answer for that. Um, I can tell you though, that vibration again depends with distance. So as it's going out, it's getting less, for every doubling of that distance, it depends by a third. So it's less and less, and the frequencies are probably also going down. So further away you are, the lower those frequencies, but the reading is also much lower.
But with softer materials absorb more maybe, or?
I, I don't have the answer for that, I'm not a geologist, I.
That's a geological question, right?
Yes, right, it'd be a geological question.
Thank you for being candid.
Ivan?
My name is Ivan Garrett, I live on, uh. I have a question regarding the blast that, that took place on February the fifth. So that was the one that had sixteen thousand six hundred fifty nine pounds of explosive. Now, I understand not all of it happened at the same time, obviously. But. Can you explain to me, because at the May fifteenth planning board meeting, one neighbor reported, reported that. A picture was knocked off the wall, and two wave scouting panels were knocked off one of her walls, and nails popped. Out of, out of her wall. So can you explain to me from a scientific standpoint? What precipitated that? That situation, uh, what is, anything possibly could have happened if, yeah, find the damage to their house?
It, I'm, I'm not. So, obviously wasn't present at the May fifteenth meeting, I'm not sure where, where the structure was located, the, the neighbor that. Was blaming the, the damage.
It's sixteen years ago.
On bears and, which is right, it's just right beside the four.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I would have to take a look back at, at the blast package and the data, I mean, that was, I think, that was shot one of two last year.
So just for your reference, sorry, more or less right there. And the property in question is more or less right there.
Okay, alright, so.
Find out again. What's the scale on this thing, so it's?
One, one inch, one centimeter.
So, you know, even.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't be able to answer that. You know, intelligent me right now without, without taking a look at some data, but I, I think again, it's. You know, that, that, that's a prime candidate to, to try to. To grab, to gravitate, to grab setup there. And I would have to look, I would have to look back at the pre-blast list too, because I, I think we've. They've, they've been offered twice premier now, right? Um. And I, I believe that not a lot of people that fell within that radius that have taken up the offering, it's, it's, it's no cost to anybody. Uh, besides the, the people doing the work. So I, I would highly suggest that if, you know, if you're within. That half a mile radius that, that you get the pre-blast survey done. Um, it's, it's just a good record of the conditions that are present. And, you know, it at least gives us a timestamp of what, you know, what the conditions were at that time. Before we, before we get into, you know, a season of blasting activity.
That's another, I have another question. On the very first blast. Which took place on November the twenty-fifth of last year. Seven thousand and forty-four pounds of explosives were used. On February fifth, more than twice the amount of explosives were used. So a lot, but a little over eight tons of explosives were used for the, for the February the fifth blast. And then on April the third blast, this is all on record.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know, there could have been other blasts, I have no idea, this is what would have on record.
Yeah.
The blast events. The final one was three thousand two hundred and thirty-six pounds, which is basically. A third, a little less than half of the first blast. My question is, how do you decide, okay? What explosives to use? You know, for each individual blast, I mean, obviously, the greater. The, the explosive, the more rock you're going to free, I would think, right? So. In terms of planning this particular approach on this quarry, how is it determined? The amount of blast reach, re-situation?
So that, so that's dependent on the customer that contracts us, so, so you, you allude to the, the three thousand pound blast.
That was the last one.
Correct, and again, I, I, I've got to get my facts straight, but common sense would dictate that, I remember we, we went in and did. A, a riprap type shot, which basically you're, you know, you're trying to, you're trying to create oversize, which isn't typically. What a gentleman who owns a rock crushing operation is trying to do. But you would, you would try to move that same amount of rock with, with a little bit less explosive to try to generate bigger stone. For the seawall projects that, that he had, I, I guess, contracted. Um, it, but again, it's, it's, it's market dependent, so it's, it's, you know. We, we get asked to design, you know, this, we need X amount of rock here. That doesn't mean that we can, uh, if he needs thirty thousand yards for the year, we can't go in and shoot a thirty thousand yard shot. Um, without, without banging it through our blast design program, it's probably not going to work. Um, but if he needs thirty thousand yards, we figure out how do we divvy that up? And get the customer what they need while, you know, staying within the USPM standards.
So I, I, I think what is, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but like a gross approximation is. It depends on the size of rocks he wants, you know, if he wants big boulder to be on the seawall, the charge will be less.
Correct, yeah.
As opposed to more gravel type rocks. Where here, large volumes will be important, then you will demand a higher charge.
Correct, yeah, basically, yeah.
And what type of blasting you're on? Whether or not we're, we're shooting open for aggregate, or maybe it's developmental. If we're going in and we're, we're developing a new shot, that might be a smaller blast.
Well, your, your first blast was in November, was supposed to be the developing blast, wasn't it, to, to break the, the face of the quarry?
Cor- correct, on the twenty-fifth, yes, yes, yeah, but we had, we had done, um. Uh, I want to say it was a week or two before that, we had done a smoke test, well, we had done. Two to three days in a row of, of that matted shooting that I discussed, you know, just to, to basically create some sort of face below. High power lines, so, um, you know, so you're going to be less charged weight, the, the rock cut was a lot less as well. Uh, but you, you'll see, I mean, if you, if you have any knowledge of the quarry, it starts at the floor, the rock just does this and, and slopes up and probably. I want to say it's high twenties at its max point for, for the working area. Uh, which really isn't even a typical quarry scenario, um, but. You know, starts from zero, so zero up to twenty eightish feet or so, I think.
So is the goal to go down?
The goal, I think, is to. I, again, I can't speak, I'm not sure, I, I, I'm not sure what, uh, what Wilson's plans are. Moving forward, honestly, so.
You mentioned you were not a geologist, do you have a geologist on your phone? Because, like, when you go to a quarry, don't you need to know what you have to deal with? I mean, in terms of rock, I'll stick out, you know, how, how vast it is and.
We don't, you know, we're not geologists by trade, but we, you know, we, we shoot enough rock between. You know, the, the area that we work in to have a general idea of powder factor to match, you know, the type of rock, so. Um, you know, granites, granites are very hard rocks, can require a hard powder factor to break that, break and move that rock. You know, a limestone that you might find down in Pennsylvania, much less powder factor to, to move that matter.
Around us, it's essentially granite.
Correct, you're, especially anything that's by the coast, it's very hard granite, you know, that's typically the case, yeah.
But that's how, remember the dots that were up in a pattern, that's how you know how close those are together. Because you do just that to get that higher powder factor. To break the rock. The better the rock moves, the less vibration.
So does that mean the? Sorry, the lower the powder factor, the less vibration?
Higher, a lower. You lower the powder factor for different types of rock.
Yeah, we said the better the rock moves, the less vibration, that means, that means how, how well matched.
It's an old adage in blasting. The greater fragmentation, less vibration. So the better you're moving that rock and, and blasting it, the lower your vibration will be, because you're utilizing that energy. So there's less waste energy that can be transmitted as vibration. So when we're designing a blast and we're designing a powder factor, we're taking all of those variables into account. And we're trying to maximize that energy to break the rock the most efficiently. Which will produce less vibration.
I'm trying to put it into simple terms, is it? Does it require more design work? To get big seawall rocks than to get aggregates?
But it, it can, yeah, for certain, because you're, you're designing to basically break, you know, the rock on a plane that's going to generate. You know, the size that, that you're, you're trying to achieve. And really, it's, it's based a lot on geology too, so where are the seams, where are the seams in the rock subsurface? So you have a face that's, we've developed a face now, you've got a, you've got a fifteen foot wall. Where do the seams look like inside that wall when you're looking at it, right, that you don't see from the top of the, of the rock surface from the virgin cut, so.
And that's the, that's the natural points along which the rock is going to break, you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
So then are you drilling? If it's a face like that, are you drilling in like this, or are you drilling down?
Drill, drilling, uh, vertically, not horizontal, okay? No, um, that, that's like, that would be like a specialty mine, like a, like a rock of ages, where they're, they're literally. Saying we need to have this size and it's got to be within an inch, and this is what we're, what we're doing. They'll do some horizontal drilling, but that's not, not what we do.
I want to make sure we have time to finish the presentation, so. I appreciate you, but, but we'll have again, one more question to the end. Lots of good questions going for us.
So, based on the ISC guidelines, so the ISC is the International Society of Explosive Engineers. And they created guidelines for blast vibration and setting up seismographs. And one of those is that it has to be placed on the ground on the side of the structure towards the blast. And again, by regulation, that's at the closest uncontrollable structure.
And then there there are further instructions from the ISC of how it should be set up. Like typically, you'd wanna bury it, you wanna go down eight to twelve inches and come path the dirt around the sensor. And then also a buzzer should come about, and that's that sensor is coupled to the ground, so it's actually moving with the ground. Not independent of the ground, think of a a bull, when we do training, we use a mechanical bull as an example. If you're on the saddle of the bull, you can bounce off the saddle, but if you're strapped to the saddle, you're gonna move with the bull. Probably not gonna fall off it, so a geofon is like that on the ground, you want it to be secured to the ground. So it's moving with the ground, not independent of it, moving independent, it'll give you erroneous or higher. Readings than you're actually getting, so. We do it typically by burial, or, because we are in New England, in the winter, the ground's frozen, you can't dig a hole. We'll also use an adhesive and actually attach it to your foundation. So you're giving you actually movement of the ground in your house as it moves. There's some examples of um blast vibrations, and again, I apologize, cause you can't read these. You look over on that left side, right over here, this. Right, right here, this area right here, so you you were measuring three different directions. You're measuring both of your horizontal directions, side to side, back and forth, and then you're also measuring vertically, up and down. So it measures all these, those functions, it also measures the acceleration, or how fast those particles move. It measures the displacement, how much they move. And then the rest of it is just uh other stuff like time relative to trigger, but those are the ones that that matter. Um, so it's measuring how fast it moves, how much it moves. And the frequency that it moves in three different directions. And that each of those colored right there represent the three different directions, like green is always vertical. Uh, blue is longitudinal and red is transverse, so those are your two horizontal tubes. And then again, you can see like in this case, over here on the left, it's nice and tight, that's a pretty good reading. The particles are close together, that means that was well coupled to the ground. We've got some very high frequencies, anything past this line is over a hundred frequencies, so that's. Good for your house, bad for your body, good for your house, and then you can see it's well below the line, over on this one to the left. There we go, um, you see those frequencies, a little bit higher velocity, um, that one's up to point five, seven. For the highest, still bunch nice and tight together though, that's what we wanna see, when we start seeing now there's vibrations in outliers. You know, maybe you might see a couple spots out here or something like that, or it's got like that shotgun look to it. Usually an indication if the geofon was not set up very well, wasn't moving beneath the ground. Those are the things that we look at when we get these readings, we're gonna take, examine them. We're gonna make sure that all these data points are well below the line, we're gonna look for setup. Again, they're nice and packed together like that, indication of good setup, yes.
You also measured the uh air blast tube with the uh.
Yes, I'll show you that.
Yep, the same time, right?
All on on here at the same time, yep. So. At his point, see if I can show up on here. Come up here a little bit higher, so behind this. First aid in this computer. Right here, I don't know if you guys probably can't see it, but right up here, it's where it shows the decibels, shows what that arrow overpressure was. Like in this case, the one on the right, you'll see one twenty-three point seven, and the one on the left was a one fifteen point two. So that was the air overpressure, those two blasts. And. I minimize it.
Is that audible sound, like decibels like our music?
It's it's measuring, it's decibels, but it's pressure, or measuring pressure, not sound.
Okay, so is there any recording of the sound, because that thing onward? Because the sound, I mean, for the people living around the the operation, is actually one of the most disruptive elements of the operation.
Yeah, well, it's, I, let me, I, I digress, it's measuring sound and pressure at the same time. But what is, that sound is coming from the pressure. That better?
Yeah.
I I apologize.
Was that the thunder then, you mentioned thunder with work?
Thunder is very similar to that, because that's actually air overpressure, when you hear the thunder, I have a video with thunder at the end of this.
Is that similar to when you having an earthquake, I lived in Alaska for a long time, and I experienced big one. And it's a train coming, or a rumbling of a truck, is that similar to what um your blast do? Even though the epicenter is three hundred miles.
And earthquake is a little bit different, because it's much deeper in the ground, this is surface, so the earthquake is different. So it's that's deep in the ground, but I've never experienced one, so I don't know whether.
It comes, I don't hear the blast, but when the rip rap is going above the river. I hear that constantly, and that's why I was interested in the question, what's that with water? Because it was directly across the.
Sound, sound does resonate over water, it's much louder, like if you're on a lake and you're yelling to somebody, they're gonna hear it.
But it was the pounding of the rocks coming down, and was pretty spectacular, and I just wonder. Is that similar to what your blasts are doing, or totally different?
I think that's different.
Is it, was it in the, from the blast?
Dumping the rock.
It doesn't have the rocks.
Were directly across from the rip.
Yeah, that is.
Pretty hard.
Yeah. Well, I think I think anybody around a quarry operation too could probably relate to. Um, and and lots of people put restricted hours on this, and when they came down, but everyone's heard that truck, you know, that truck body slammed. Um, I mean, the the DDs that come from one of those events are is pretty, you know, i- is up there.
Ho ho-rimming, ho-rimming is one of the most annoying things there is, it's extremely loud. That's a different type of noise from blast. And it's measured different, if we had a sound specialist, sure they could explain the difference. Not a geologist, and I'm not a sound specialist. One one way to skin a cat.
Let me, let me do this.
Read it if you do this, so what this is, it's um. It's a list of natural and human uh induced vibrations that we found, and what we find is that temperature change. Can exert as much as three inches per second on your house, um humidity changes. Uh, can force greater than two inches per second on your home, and as somebody who suffers from rheumatoid arthritis, I can tell you. Temperature and humidity, it it, you feel that on your body, and for the storm ever gets there. You feel that, so you can appreciate that, I think, if you suffer from something like that, like I.
Most definitely, yeah.
Right, I think, you know, a good way to relate it to affecting homes is, I know when I came out the door this morning, I I've got a front door that in August, when it's humid. Sticks, I've really gotta, I've gotta jam that thing to get it shut this morning, I mean, it shuts like like nothing, right, because the the humidity's out of the air, the house is actually. The structure is actually compressed, and, you know, if things get tighter, so.
I just wanna read a couple of these to you, because it's pretty amazing. That's it, so, a slamming of your front door. Exerts anywhere from point five, point one five rather, to one point nine inches per second of vibration. Slamming your door, you think about, somebody said something about a picture falling off, slamming a door, it's not uncommon for a picture to fall off. There's there's the reason for it, um, jumping on the floor and walking, point one to point five. Again, the the ground is moving at point zero one to point zero two, so that makes sense, right? A humidity change, uh, one to a two point four, and if anybody wanted a copy of this, you can give me your email, I can actually send it.
Actually, it's even just to make sure that Terry gets it, then Terry.
Oh, let's see, what else is interesting on?
Or you or me.
Just closing the door without slamming it, point three to point four five. So these are all things that go on in our house every day, that we don't even think about, they're actually observing vibration actions. And and again, if you get an email, I just, I can send it to anybody that would like I have a copy of some of that.
I think if it's possible, we would actually like a copy of all the slides for our review.
And then, of course, wind, um, as much as six inches per second in a house, but. We we've all dealt with a hurricane up here, we know how much damage a hurricane can give, so. That could be as much as six inches per second in the house. And you said this doesn't have sound.
I don't think we got sound, we don't have a ability here, so.
So this is a video, it's in Rhode Island, Cumberland, Rhode Island, and you're gonna see the blast go off. And then you're gonna see a strike the lightning, and if you could hear this, a huge clap of thunder, and the guy that's videotaping it. You don't see the camera move, because he's actually holding it, until that thunder hits, and let's do a jerk. Yeah, see, and so. You're gonna see the blast go off right between the tree and the truck. There's the lightning, so I guess it was first.
Yeah, I think the the example here was, you know. You know, heard the, saw the lightning flash and heard the thunder kinda jerked, and then, you know, conversely, the shock, which you can see mattered right behind the light. Kind of a tall light pole there goes off, and it's, you know, the the difference in, the difference in sound is, you know, pretty, pretty dramatic.
Unfortunately, we can't hear that.
That was a blast.
Yeah.
That was rather a large one. Lot of room there, houses weren't real close. Now we're open to questions. Given our very thick stuff.
I I guess I'm gonna turn back to the correlation between the explosion and what we're feeling and what we're hearing. What we're experiencing, and I, I live probably about three thousand feet, so I mean, and I've had my survey. I was sitting in my office on the second floor of the house, and with the April blast, I jumped, the whole house shook and I jumped. What was I feeling?
At three thousand feet, you're feeling the air. And if you're on a second form, I think you're gonna feel it more.
Uh, it's sorry for being in your ear, but correlation, where are you to the to the floor of your state?
I guess the farthest here, or here?
Yes.
More or less, yeah.
I'd be right there, okay. So that makes, so that makes, because it's your, that's kind of the direction of the, yeah, the operation right now, yeah.
So maybe the consideration is, as you said earlier, so that everyone is happy, is basically if you direct, make your directing go out. Away from where there's more resonance.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's possible, but it will help, it's a thought.
I think, I think, you know, we can, we can have that conversation, um, with with the owner, but, you know. My suggestion may be, do we, do we manipulate the face in the opposite direction, is, you know, unfortunately, if we if we do turn it now. You're typically, your vibration is gonna travel back from from that free face, so those folks on Gears and probably feel it more dramatically than.
But I think, I think, to be fair to the people on the community, I think we have to figure out. The which group, since we know that you can control some with direction.
Yeah.
To ease some of it, maybe we need to shift some of it.
Absolutely.
Though it could breathe, it depends on if it's possible.
Exactly, if it's possible.
I've never been in this quarry, so I can't speak to that, but it is, it is direction.
And then my other question is, you you commented about putting seismographs around, and you said you can't put it in the office. Where did you put the seismograph when you did the blast?
So that, so Tim may have misphoned a little bit earlier, but.
I didn't say, I said near the office, I think that's what I said, on the ground by it.
Yeah.
You you typically, for regulatory purposes, you wanna be set up at the closest unowned structure.
What's the definition of an unknown structure?
The the owner of the quarry doesn't own it.
Okay.
Not in control of that project.
Okay, so would have been.
Now, if, if. Somebody refuses access, then you can use a secondary location, and you just have to make a notation of it in the blast.
Very good, and I think, you know, if we can, if there's some folks in here that that would like that, we would, we would obviously, again, like to capture that data. And again, we're, we don't have endless resources, unfortunately, we have a finite amount of equipment, and and then obviously, the the blast rest will outperform it, so. Um, I think if we could get, you know, three to four seismographs set up kind of, in a, you know, in a box sector around the pit. And see what, directionally, what is, what is going on.
Do you put it on the house, do you put it on the ground, what do you know?
Um, so, personally, and I think it just, it provides better data, I like, I like to anchor right to the structure. Because, uh, you know, Tim was speaking about frequency earlier, sometimes, uh, if you're standing outside. And a shock goes off, you may hear it, but you're not, you're not gonna feel that, the structure will be, will actually feel that, because structure will feel stuff below twenty hertz. Which the human body can't really detect, so I I like to anchor right to the structure, so we get, you know, the best data that we can, and. And really, it's it's pretty non-intrusive, we, you know, if you've got a mulch bed or something around the house, what we try to do is just dig, you know, down below that mulch bed. Epoxy to the structure, you know, at at shot time, we gain, we get the data, take it off, fill back, you know, fill the mulch back in if. And we do that, I wanna say nine times out of ten, no spark operation.
Very good.
How can we ensure that that actually happens, because there doesn't happen already, but that's a nice one that has been placed on on control property.
I I think, th- this is the time where, if if you wanna request a seismograph, like, I mean, I can create a a list right here, and we can. We can sign up right here, right now.
Yeah, we.
But again, we do have limited resource, so, like, two or three would be ideal.
I think if.
I have two questions, how far underground do you blast? You know, from the ground, how deep can you go when you go?
We don't, so Tim was speaking about subdrill before, so basically, we, the the, uh, road going to the quarry is the is the floor level.
Okay.
So we're not going below the ground, we're drilling, you know, a, you know, three or so feet below that surface to make sure that we we maintain that grade. As far as like, you know, speaking of that pit in Boston, two hundred seventy feet below street level, we're not, we're we're not doing anything like that in this operation.
But the the general answer is.
A self-draining quarry, explain a little about a self-draining quarry. Just gotta be talking about water, right?
Yeah, so wa- so water control, I mean, it's, and and I'm, again, we're the, we're the D D and B company, we don't. Deal with the permitting side of of the drains and things like that, but typically, what you do is you you, you try to create some sort of slope. Uh, that the natural, you know, rainwater, stormwater will run off, you know, to a body of water where it can, it can be filtered. So that's, you know, my understanding of that, and and typically, you'll see that in a lot of quarries, that they, it's a very small degree, but across. Four hundred feet, you may have, you may have a two foot grade difference, but that that's actually enough to to get that material, you know, moving to where you want it to go.
The planning board got a blast report, and my question is, I would like someone to walk us through. So you could understand that report and have the information, so there's a legend, because there was the reports. But nobody on the planning board knew how to read.
Try on the blast report, you could put up if you go over that, okay? Well, I have all the reports right here, if you want to.
But it's, but it would be nice to know what everything meant, because nobody did.
Yeah. Um, not sure if I can grab that paper, I mean.
That's all for.
Um, so really, I mean, the the front page is pretty self-explanatory, it's just, it's got, uh, it's mostly our safety. You know, protocol, what we, what we talked about for hazards that day, precautions taken, gives the address of the quarry. Um, our pre-shift inspection time, which is when the crew gets on site, and then post-shift is typically, you know, when that shot's detonated, what time. You know, if who does their post-shift inspection, then leaves, uh, list crew members, things like that. Uh, second page, there's a notes section at the very top, which, uh, you know, we try to detail as best we can, kinda how that shot loaded. Um, typically, that's what that space is used for. Um, we detail, you know, kind of right below that, the 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 orientation of the shots, so the actual direction that the shot's going, you know, on a on a compass heading. Um. Where the shot was located in the quarry and that that varies quarry to quarry, um, Tim was talking about pounds per delay. Um, this is the section where, you know, we, how many pounds per delay are shooting, how many, how many, excuse me, how many holes per delay are shooting, depending on. Um, you know, our pattern, uh, and how we time that shot. Um, and then it gives you your max weight per per delay, so that's the max amount of pounds that are shooting within an eight millisecond window, that's. It's a little technical, but that's what pounds per delay definition is. Um, and that's that's an old standard that's probably gonna be outridden at some point. Um, and then some of this information to the right is is goes back to that spreadsheet Tim was detailing, what's our predicted. You know, P P B for for this blast design. This is where all that that legwork's done ahead of time, right? So we do our best, we, you know, we're not gonna be able to to uh, predict this. You know, to an exact, you know, decimal point here, but this gives us a range to know our maximum. You know, predicted particle velocity is is gonna be this, and typically what we see is it's 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 lower, you know, when you have a. Put a seismograph.
How do you predict that though? I mean, what do you do? So so there's a formula, you know, you take, you take the distance to the closest structure. You divide it by the square root of of the pounds of explosives that are detonating at one time. That creates something called the scale distance, can I see that for a second? That scale distance, oh. Oh, it should be on here, right? Right here, that second number down, so like in this blast right here, the one blast number two. From. Four twenty-two. The scaled distance was actually eighty-six point six six, pretty conservative number. This number to the left, the slope, that negative one point six, that's the attenuation, or how fast. The vibration is decay. And.
And that's based on a type of, that's based on some basic understanding of the local.
So in the case of a a negative one point six, that's an industry average that most blast you choose to calculate. Um, in actuality, if we had thirty or forty blasts at this bed, I could plot them into something called a regression analysis. And I'd probably come up with that attenuation or slope with decay, it's probably gonna be closer to a negative one point four, so that's usually where they come out. Um, but the industry.
Number, you need a bunch of shot.
You you need at least thirty shots. The the industry as a whole uses negative one point six. Then then you have your distance to your closest structure right here, that's at thirteen oh five. So we take that number, we take the charge weight, which he has. Right here, maximum predicted charge weight to twenty-six point eight, and that's how he comes up with the scale distance. Now to calculate the vibration, you take that eighty-six point six five. You raise it to the negative one point six, which is set attenuation or slope for decay. And then you multiply it by a number called the K factor, and what the K factor is. It's it's an industry number that takes into account. All of the different variables that might exist, it'll take into account geology, it'll take into account confinement. It'll take into account shot direction and. That industry average, a lower bound number is twenty-four. And upper bound number is six hundred. The industry on a whole uses one sixty as an average. Two forty-two for a very confined shot. So in a quarry, you normally have an open face like over here at Wilson's, so you would use a one sixty to calculate your vibration. If you're going to the third page.
And that's, sorry, just understand you use that one sixty, assuming you're not doing anything that you consider out of the ordinary.
Right, so so again, you have a lower bound, you have an upper bound, you're doing something out of the ordinary or something that's heavily confined. You're gonna wanna use a number more on that upper bound side, like in construction, even though two forty-two is considered heavily confined. You'll often see a blaster designing a blast to a three hundred or a three forty for a K factor, because he just knows. That that shot is out of the ordinary if you just put it, or heavily confined, so that number needs to be higher to predict this vibration. Very rare to see a number up around six hundred, usually when you see a number that high, there's something wrong, something wrong with your design. The same with the lower bound with the twenty-four, when you see a number below twenty-four. There's probably something wrong, really at twenty-four, you probably should be looking at your design. Is there probably something wrong with it?
Is it possible for you, and I don't mean to create extra work, but I think it would help to help both of the committees here. Is to take a blast report and annotate it and tell it, what are the most important numbers we need to look at and what do they mean?
Oh, absolutely, that that's 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 a simple exercise, yeah. That that may be the, that may be the easiest way for us to explain that, if we can, we can take a a PDF document and edit it with, you know.
That would be marvelous, yeah.
Yeah.
That would be tremendous, yeah.
Got an example of that already built out, what I'll do is, we'll uh, we'll take one from Wilson and do that, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
So when we go back to the to the front page here.
Tim, I think we're gonna, so we're gonna annotate this on a document, so not, that's.
Well, I just want to point out, this blaster predicted his vibration at a two twenty K factor. So we knew that shock was a little more confined, maybe there was a pile in front of it, but so it took that into account, and if you go to the last page.
Let's see what this, what they just.
Uh, second shot. Four twenty-two.
Okay, so yes, so that would be. Yeah, so this, this is, in this case, you can kind of see, so that's more of a confined design on that shot, right, shoot for the C wall, lower pounds. And that's why the the K factor was adjusted.
And if we go to the bottom, this is where you enter your vibration. It calculates out what the actual K factor was on the blast. Because you can use map to calculate that once you have a a vibration reading. And again, remember on the first page, I said he designed two twenty? His actual K factor came in at two thirty-nine. So the blaster did a pretty good job of calculating what that K factor might be, and he got a reading of a point one nine. And he predicted a reading of a point one seven. That's a pretty good job, it's lasted a pretty nice job.
I think I think the important part is to to generate a a very accurate K factor like Tim explained. And we do this a lot on on-site jobs where you're, you're there for six to, six months to a year, maybe, you may be shooting. You know, on the same dog, you may shoot thirty shots a week. You know, smaller shots, but they, that's typically what you see, you can gather that data in a lot quicker fashion. I mean, to to generate thirty shots at where we are right now is gonna take, take some time to do that, correct, yeah.
Yeah, so there's some guesswork involved.
Yeah.
He did, he did a phenomenal job here. You know, I mean.
No, that that is very helpful.
Close and the PDF will also.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be, I think that'll be a lot easier to.
And we'll and we'll circulate it.
Yeah, okay.
And I guess, do you have any other questions?
I have some, but if you have more, go ahead.
I've got the horrible question, and I'll ask it so then you can be, look like the nice guy. What's the worst-case scenario that we as the community can expect? Does it happen when you blast? Does it happen after? I mean, in your experience, where has something gone wrong and what did it look like?
So so worst case, worst case scenario in blasting.
Someone gets hurt.
We we don't control that energy.
Yeah.
And so somebody, if if physical rock actually goes. You know, past the extended, your blast area zone and damages a structure or equipment or a person.
Um, and that's fly rock you're talking about.
That's, that would be classified as fly rock, correct.
But you control the fly rock with the pads and.
With, well, yes, with the pads and with appropriate, when we're not shooting that, with appropriate burdens on the face.
Okay.
On the face, so.
Again, goes for all to that design. You know, it's all about the design and making sure our number one priority is always safe.
How far can fly rock go?
It can go a long ways, I mean, it, you know, depending on, it really depends on the depth of the hole, um. But it can go, I mean, thousands of feet, honestly.
Okay.
Yeah.
What about misfires?
Uh, this fire, I would, I would probably put it number two, a worst-case scenario. Um, and that's, yeah, when when product doesn't detonate as it's intended, right? Um.
Have you ever had any bomb detonation, um, material like, like this left on guarded or somehow?
No, no, cuz you.
So it's like a non-exploited bomb from.
And that's honestly, so so Tim was speaking about uh, our electronic detonators. Um, and and the reason, the reason the industry, I think is moving that way, specifically us, is. One, the the ability to influence timing within one millisecond, so within one thousandth of a second, right? Whereas all non-L timing, you had, you had two options, seventeen milliseconds or twenty-five milliseconds, and that was it. It was a pyrotechnic charge, right, you're, it's like, you know, wily coyote, like a fuse. Um, so so you're able to influence the timing, but two. When you, when you actually connect that shot, you're receiving a signal that says this detonator is ready to fire. Um, and that's, and really, that's another advantage of of why we use the electronic detonators, especially in a, you know. A a larger shot area, um, cuz you wanna have that peace of mind that everything's gonna shoot as it should.
You can test the continuity, right?
Correct, right.
So you know if something's not connected, something's not programmed before you fire the shot. And it's, it just happens that I was reviewing this material just the other day. Last year, well, actually, this year, up to this point, we have shot just shot two hundred thousand electronic detonators. And our misfire rate is point zero 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 four.
So that's like.
And typically, it's not, what, through determination of kind of the forensic looking at it. It's not a matter of the detonator not firing, but it's a matter of sometimes it's subservice conditions, you know, very water-bound conditions where. That that hole will actually get hit with a, kind of like a uh, hydrologic pressure, and it it actually crumples the cap, so it's not able to shoot. And that's, that's typically an instance we see it in.
The micro.
And what do you do?
Transient pressure.
So we, so we go, we try to recover it.
Yeah.
Um.
And you see it so.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
The que- the que- the question was, Gabe.
The question was, well, if you do have that situation, what do you do with the material that didn't explode properly?
So we, so we need to come up with a remediation plan and and Tim's, uh, you know, what he was talking about here was, you know, you may find a a booster that's not shot, right? Um, you know, out of two hundred thousand detonators, excuse me, but but what that results in is a booster that's not fired.
Same product.
Um, so typically, what we do is we we recover that, so we come up with a remediation plan, we recover it. What we try to do is, if we're able to pull the detonator out, we can send that back to the manufacturer for forensic analysis. If we're not able to pull the detonator out, we can't transport it, so what we have to do is detonate that, you know, onsite. And typically, that's, it's it's not, you know, it's not rocket science, we just, we dig a hole, bury it in the sand and and shoot it to consume it.
It's a non, it's a non-event. But we're heavily regulated, regulated by the ETF.
Yeah.
So any, any explosives that miss fire, we have to account for it, it's short.
Very good. Um, so I have just a couple more questions. Um. I'll have to look at my sheet to remember what they are, but I think, um. For. I think there's a lot of concern in this community about. Like the interaction between the blasting that you do and the local geology, particularly in terms of groundwater. Um. And I don't know if you guys are responsible for any of that management, but it would be helpful, I think, to hear you guys talk about how you. Um, control for maintaining water quality in groundwater with your operations.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So ground, I mean, the way we control, the only, the only way that we can control it is is to make sure that everything detonates, right?
Yep.
Um, and we, you know, a very short sample size, obviously, with the quarry at the road, but there's, you know, been zero misfire there. Um, and that, and that's really the only way we can, we can control that, is a hundred percent detonation. Um, th- these are conditions that wouldn't lend themselves to the type of stuff Tim was talking about, um. So it's, I wouldn't lose sleep at night about having issues with caps up the road, because it's just, we're not, we're not drilling below water level, we're not. You know, we're not encountering that hydrologic pressure below the surface.
Yeah, it's helpful, it's helpful to know that you're not drilling below water levels, I think, I, I mean, even more broadly, it's it's really like. Less I think about like explosives or whatever compounds leaching directly.
Yeah.
And more about like. Changing the the flow of water subgrade.
Yeah.
Via the vibration, you know, even immediately below the blast area such that. Like different compounds are starting to show up in wells, things like that, I think that's. And you know, none of us here, as far as I know, we can't account for everyone, but knows quite enough about the geology to understand. What the chain of events would be that would lead to that, so I think if you guys haven't, if you know, anything that you know about, it would be helpful to hear.
So when we're blasting, it sounds like fairly shallow. We're, we're not going deep enough where we would even get into the aquifers, but outside of that area. We, we're not moving the ground, you know, again, you're only allowed point zero zero eight, one thousandths of an inch of movement. So you're not affecting the aquifers at all.
Would you say that blast, would you say that blasting potentially disrupts mineral stability, making something like arsenic more bio, I mean.
Yeah.
Or bioavailable and soluble, because we had comprehensive testing done of our well, um. In twenty five, twenty seventeen, and in twenty twenty one. Actually, and then others we could think, and now suddenly we've had unacceptable levels of arsenic, so of course. I I'm concerned and thinking that.
That would not come from the blasting.
No.
A lot of that could have been the drought this summer.
Yeah, well, because.
The arsenic was a natural.
A lot of people discovered arsenic in their wells, they're out here, doesn't the trial ever.
Maybe blasting disrupts it.
No.
Debbie, did you have a question?
I wouldn't vote the pre-blast survey, have those all been completed now?
Uh, yes, I think, so the last round, we offered them, I believe it was middle of summer, uh, it was July timeframe. And but again, there was, there was a handful that accepted through through certified letter, so.
I know it all received certified letters.
Debbie lives, actually lives next to me and she'll get a letter, okay? Well, I, then we need to look into that, we we, that's something that we. We farm that out because we, it it's a conflict of interest, issue obviously, so.
Correct.
Um.
What's the conflict?
Well, the conflict is for them to to for them, for us to do the pre-blast, I think it's a conflict of interest.
Not talk about it now? No, well.
No, we're saying that for us to do your pre-blast survey is a conflict of interest.
Yeah, so we hired, we hired a third party to do that.
But I was only the impression that Kelly Swordson worked for you.
We, well, we hi- we hire is the third party to do, to do some pre-blast.
But is that a conflict of interest?
No, she, she's a very reputable person in the industry.
You don't pay her, oh.
Well, we pay her for her service, yes, but we don't, we don't pay her to.
If that employee fires directly, she's an independent source of.
And I have worked with a structural engineer and he simply said that her was, her engineer, her her. Inspections are better than things that he's seen in the basket, so she is good, she is reputable. What I will comment is that her letter of introduction to the community needs to be rewritten and written better so people understand it better. And I think that will protect everybody.
Okay. And I'll, I'll note that, yeah.
It it does not, it does not explain the situation well enough.
Sure, okay.
May I, may I jump in? Can I, uh, this is Bill Batty, Deacon of Harmony Bible Church. Yeah, I just wanted, uh, regarding the inspections, Harmony Bible Church has accepted inspections uh, on two occasions. Uh, and regarding the professionalism of your inspector, I have asked on multiple occasions to get a copy of my report and I get no response to my email. Just thought I'd let you guys know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wasn't aware of that, thank you.
Um. So I have another question. Um. That bears a little bit on the ordinance process, how? You say you do a little bit of forensic work, um. How? Do you, how does a claim of, say, someone claims that their home has been damaged?
Do not do anything with that, you have a pre-blast department there.
Yeah, but I was, but you know more than we know, how does that process work? And how do those claims get adjudicated?
So that, so basically what they do is take the seismic data that we have and extract the distance from that structure and it's. You know, it's not a, it's not a perfect formula, but it it speaks to kind of Tim's regression analysis from. You know, from, you know, from five hundred feet away, this is the reading, and it's not, and trust me, we're not, I'm not saying that what people are. Are feeling or receiving is not, we don't take that into account, and I'm not here to say that, but.
Yeah.
It's it's a, it's an investigation and it's, you know, there's no emotion involved, it's. We have X here, this is four times the distance away, this is what would be the predicted peak particle velocity here, we're safe here. You know, four times the distance with with regression, you know, that that's basically how that's handled.
And I, yeah, unfortunately, my my experience is that the mathematics doesn't always. Work to satisfy the homeowner.
Okay.
And it doesn't always reflect what the homeowner sees. So I I think that, I don't know if you can improve upon that, but I understand the process.
Fortunately, that falls to the insurance company and.
Yeah, and is that, so that's, that's like a standard. Yeah, and is that, so that's, that's like a standard process that the, that essentially like, and it's your insurance or is it the quarry, the, the quarry owner's insurance?
Uh, that, that would be our, our insurance. Yeah.
So you're providing this, the cert- part of the service that you're providing to the quarry owner is that blasting related damage is covered by your insurance?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, that's helpful. Another question?
Getting back to the water test. Uh, we just had a little conversation about the arsenic. So why do you do the water test? What? What do you think is gonna change in that water test result? Why do you offer that?
Uh, because it's basically, it's just the same reason why we would wanna do a survey of your home. So we can get the condition of what, you know, I'm assuming well is. And we can make sure that there aren't, there isn't a pre-existing condition there. Um, that, you know, I've got arsenic combined well right now. We just, we had a test run in August, uh, in August, excuse me. Um, it's, it's alarming, but, and again, I'm not a stormwater person or, you know, a, a geologist or anything like that, but I think. Uh, you know, environmental conditions affects our wells probably more than, than anything else that's going on in the industry right now. Um, but what we wanna do is make sure there's not an issue with that well before, before, you know, blasting even begins. So that's.
So you don't well for arsenic, but you do nitrates and nitrates. So those are the two that you feel the most important to.
That's what's gonna come from explosives. Explosives are made out of.
And that's why you offer the water.
And they are valuable in water.
That has never been explained. Thank you.
Yeah, that is helpful to understand.
Yes.
So I, I was, I had a po- question about that. I guess like. Um. So obviously all of the handling of all the blasting agents and everything is super heavily regulated. Um. Do you, does, does the blasting company, are you also the supplier for that? Or do you? What is the supply chain like for those? And what is, like, how toxic are those compounds? Like, are they really bad for you?
Well, it's a, it's a chemical compound, you know, within, you, you know, Kevin and I handle it every single day. So.
Yep.
Um, there, there's safety data sheets to go along with everything, with every product that basically claim your exposure level. Um, we would have, we would have to be swimming in that stuff seven days a week.
Yeah.
Literally fully, you know, submerged in it. I think over the, the course of many, many years to have, to have issues with it. There's, you know, there's trace amounts that, you know, you might get on your arm while you load the hole. It's, you know. No chemicals are good. I mean, I, I don't think that that's a secret, but.
Yeah.
Um, and our supply chain is, you know, is fluid and dynamic. I mean, there was, uh.
Totally.
We all, we all know about, you know, all these oversea wars that have been going on that, you know. Countries buy out high munitions and that affects supply chains in the explosives industry. Um, so, you know, we may get product from Canada, we may get product from Mexico. It depends on where we're able to source it, but, you know, we have a, we have a joint venture partner. In Dino Explosives, which, you know, basically handles that for us. We just tell them what we need and when we need it.
And they, and they do the shipping and everything. They'll. They have, you have, you know, obviously have specialized vehicles. What do we need to bring the stuff to the sites?
Correct.
Um, okay.
Yeah, so in this area, we have a magazine site in Gardner, Maine, and we have another one in Auburn, New Hampshire. So up here, one of those two sites in the Eagle Services is, and again, heavily regulated by ATF. And to Pete's point about us being, you know, we use bulk explosives mostly to load into the ground. And it's not uncommon to get that on your clothes. And to be honest, when these guys leave a quarry after that, they look like they've been painting. Because the, the bulk explosive, when it dries, looks like white paint on your clothing and you, you can be covered in it. And we experienced that.
Yeah, so it's a labor, you know, for lack of a better term, it's a labor intensive job. I mean, physically, you know, loading stuff into the ground. Um, but it all goes back to making sure, you know, a hundred percent detonation, right? So we're very conscious about nothing, you know. No explosive product on the ground that's not inside a hole to be detonated. We're very.
Yeah.
And making sure that everything detonates completely.
Yeah.
And that's, we, I mentioned the nitrates. That's how you can roll that. It's by everything detonating completely.
Are gases created by detonating explosives? Any gases?
Carbon monoxide can, can be a byproduct, doesn't. Um. Up in this area, that's typically not a concern. Uh, when you get to the south mid-Atlantic area where there's a softer geologies, they actually go and hand out CO monitors because that is a concern down there.
Within a certain distance, though, you're talking about, you know, shooting a trench line, you know, twenty feet off someone's house. It's a, it's a common sense practice.
Ni- nitrogen dioxide? Is that what you mean?
Nitrous oxide or nitric oxide?
Yeah, that, that can be a byproduct. That's when the nitrates hit the atmosphere. They spill an oxygen atom and they become nitrogen dioxide. And if you're blasting, you see yellow smoke that is nitrogen dioxide. However, it dissipates extremely quickly. Um, so it's not gonna reach your house. You might see it in the quarry, but it dissipates almost immediately.
So would the workers in the quarry though be exposed?
And we do not allow them into that area until that is dissipated. You wait for the fumes to clear before you go in.
Yeah, not immediate area. That's, there's a process where. You know, you certify that the blast is all clear and you wait for, you know, if there's any residue to dissipate and then, you know, go back in and, you know, go get back to work.
Does the wind carry it along or is it the wind?
Not really, because again, it dissipates so quickly. You know, it's not stable, so it disappears rather quickly. Dust is gonna travel much further than that.
Well, speaking of dust, which creates more dust, the after the blast, when they process the rock or the actual blast?
Probably the, probably the crushing side, honestly. Um. But there's, you know, there's a, there's a heavy industry focus on, on dust control. Obviously, um, these guys are working right beside that crusher. So there's measures in place that, to make sure that that stuff stays concentrated and it's not, you know, blowing. You know, over where people are inhaling it. Obviously, that's, that's not good for anybody. Um, our exposure with that is on the drilling side, cause when you're, when you're, when you're drilling the rock, you're creating dust.
Correct.
So we've got a, you've got pretty advanced water control systems on, on each rig and. Th- these drills now, i- i- you can look up old blasting photos or old drilling photos and these guys are like running the air track drills and they're just, you can't even see them. They're just submerged in dust, but. These days, um, these machines are pretty, pretty impressive. Um, and then they gotta be, honestly, it's a safety, so.
And so that's just they're drilling wet to keep the dust down.
We, yeah, there's actually a, there's a water control system that goes down and through the rod that's spinning that, you know, keeps that, keeps that dust down.
So basically it keeps the dust right where it's being generated.
Right, exactly.
In the hole.
Yeah.
That's good.
The sirens that you send off when you blast? How far away can they be heard?
I don't know how far they can be, they can be heard from here. Um. If that's, if there's. If there's a, a person that is out of ways that, that feels like they, they're not hearing it and they would like to hear it. Um, I mean, I'm sure we could devise a plan, but it's.
There's no regulation.
No, there's no regulation. So we, again, we try to be like good neighbors and do the right thing, but.
But the issue is more for safety for your, for the people who work.
It's right, right in that blast area. You know, the people that are within that property, you know, sure that they.
Make sure they're out of the way. For Prince. Do you have any questions?
Fine.
Any other question?
Yeah, I just, I'm asking, I, I've never heard exactly how you determine this survey. Which the, I know which the distance, but where's it measured from? Is it to the property line?
No, it's, it's to the actual blast area. So the area that, that is being worked in.
Okay, so then to the survey you're doing on the, the, the residents around, how do you determine to this compare?
Uh, so there's a, there's a state regulation and I believe we've, we've gone outside of that to try to capture and, you know, make sure that we're. That everyone is satisfied, but it's in the state of Maine, it's, it's basically half a mile. It's, it's twenty-five hundred feet.
From, from the last. The residents or the property line?
That, that is to the ref- that's to the residents. Yeah.
The house.
Right. But it.
And it's measured from where in the, from the where?
From the, from the actual blasting work area in the quarry. So if we measured from the front of. Wilton Construction, you know, you're, you're, uh, fourteen hundred feet back. You know, before you're in the coring operation there. So we measure from the actual blast, the working blasting area. That's, that's the regulation.
Anybody else have any questions? Questions from the board?
Right.
I have a recommendation for you.
Please.
I heard you're trying to rewrite your blasting regulations and everything. I think a very helpful tool for you would be, and you will have to buy it, they're expensive. But Maine is a NFPA state and its blasting regulations, even though they, they can differ, they put in amendments. They're based on NFPA four ninety-five. And if you could get a copy of that, it might help you with rewriting your.
Are you talking about the actual, just the document?
Yeah, because that has regulations in it.
Right.
And, and they're trying to rewrite. So just give them a framework of some.
Okay, let's, I could probably gain that information and.
That'd be helpful.
Save your buck.
You have, it's not in a PDF form.
Uh, I've got, I've got. I've got the, you know. Your booklet.
Oh, you're gonna scan.
Well, I mean, I can work on some of that stuff. I'm trying to be helpful today.
All right, nice. And I'll give you my business card after, and if you get me an email with anybody that wants that, um, with that house.
Well, this thing can go to your.
Yeah, I'll send it to you and then.
Yeah, and if, if you're willing to share a copy of the full slide presentation, it would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just so we have that in our records. Um, but we appreciate your time.
Yeah.
We learned.
Thank you.
Um, and, um. I think you guys who came, I didn't even realize that's where you were coming from.
I live next to a war.
Part of the job, so it's.
Do you have the U.S. extensive? Yep, yep. Right down the road, very major, ten years, extensive, extensive quarry.
Okay.
So.
Now.
Send that.
Um, a long time.
Yeah, he's, the quarry by us is moved location, but yeah. He's loaded, he'll be wrapping in wire. He'll be wrapping it like chicken wire, put it on his truck and then go back. Down route. Created one vibration and no, and that whole quarry. I never heard them flash.
Yeah. And if folks wanna talk to these guys about getting a seismograph.